We we have the title, we just got the title. Did he say he bought it? Just tell me about it. Roger Duffy only need that block that is blocked by the dark part of it.
Welcome to our workshop meeting tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda. I have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and second.
Granger, right?
Where do I?
All right, move on to item two, discussion review of the northern corridor, Councilwoman Granger.
I just handed out to you a document that I put together after the last northern corridor meeting and the Habitat meeting. And just the, A, and I'm gonna review that, A talks about our stance as a city council that we recognize the northern corridor is an important part of the infrastructure plan for future growth in the county. We have grave concerns about the close proximity of the northern corridors currently proposed to Washington City homes and the additional traffic which would flow under Washington Parkway once it connects. We're asking for mitigation to that occurring. As I, I went to this last meeting, the meetings have been pretty much monthly with all of the relevant agencies coming in, flying in from everywhere for these meetings. We're aware, I think, as we talked about it before, that land is being needed to the city of Washington in the Habitat. The meeting indicated that expectation that there would be a quick claim of that property to the Habitat from those three cities that are receiving it. In talking with Roger and Mayor, that really has never been an understanding that's been given to them, but the question is can we use that land as leverage to influence the designated route for the proposed northern corridor? And I'm really just throwing that out. NEPA has been responsible to assess the human impact of the renewal along with proposed corridor. How do we want to indicate as a city to them the human impact such as the road, the use of trails, parking, utility corridors, and other things? Okay? And now is the time, right now, you may have seen in the news that the, the meeting or the document has just come together, the scoping document, and there'll be a hearing on that on December the seventeenth from four thirty to seven thirty in the Dixie Center. And so, the content of that scoping meeting is going to show the proposed route by the county because it was in documents that they created. But the reality is that they also have to look at all the other alternatives and either accept or eliminate those alternatives as part of their scoping. They also have to communicate, as you'll see in this document, with cooperating agencies, and that includes St. George, Washington City, and Santa Clara. There are supposed to be meetings being held to discuss our issues and concerns. I know that Mayor Pike is particularly concerned about the utility corridors. And I've expressed some interest in the, in the, in the trails and the parking that's available there. And at the last meeting, mentioned that I was concerned that the scoping meeting would cover only the one alternative, which is the one that concerns me the most, and not the other six or seven alternatives that have been drawn up. So there are other alternatives, and some of the alternatives that aren't showing anymore have been cleared up to Leeds, as you know, and some, and exit that goes directly onto Red Hills Parkway. So I wanted you, that there's, money has been pulled together to buy off the in holdings, that's the branded in holdings, and I think you understand how that happens, is that he gets some tax benefit by only having so much of that value done to one entity, which would be the Habitat, and the rest to the other entities in order to reduce his tax burden. The scoping document will be available, and I think it's really important that we understand what's happening in that scoping and participate in it. We have not, as I am aware, I don't know if you are, had any requests for these cooperating agency meetings as far as we know. Okay, all right. We're, we're supposed to be receiving a letter as a cooperating agency to meet and discuss and sign and provide a letter of support. And we need now, in this timeframe with the, the comment period that I think is sixty days or thirty days, which is taking place just before Christmas when people are pretty busy, to make our position clear, if we have a position we want to make clear. We have taken a position, which is why I included the quote "in eight," but I don't believe that we've done much since we did do that quote. Okay, the rest of that meeting, the intent of the corridor, as far as I'm concerned, is to provide an alternative access to I-15. A direct route to exit thirteen would provide that. The route to Washington, through Washington Parkway may not provide that as, with the main street exit entrance is yet to be, I think, settled, though there certainly is only one recommendation up now. The additional alternative routes lead directly to Washington Parkway, none show a direct route to exit thirteen. So if the ones that they're considering is one that goes above those homes, they're are, they're all connecting into the Washington Parkway, which is going through the homes that are up there now and the additional subdivision that's being built. The impact, if it connects to Washington Parkway and hence to Green Springs Drive, I know that I've had disagreements with Mike about the impact that it will have on the Green Springs exit and the lights there, but I feel like that people who are going to Costco or want to go into the city that are coming across that corridor will definitely go down Green Springs Drive to the, well, to the problem of this, of the homes that all live there. You know, it seems to me that when the original drawings were done, well, let me do the last one. We need a physical premise or a presence, I'm sorry, I misstated that at, at those meetings and the mayor's educated, and is that still true that you are going to attend those meetings from now on? Now, because we need, and during this next month or two, we need a very active premise going on there. I just want to summarize that dialogue by saying this. There's been for a long time some supposition that there will eventually be a northern corridor, even though there has never been any activity in the Habitat or its renewal, that would suggest that. That may well occur in this next scoping meeting, as there's an addendum said there, but here's a, a possibility, there may be a northern corridor. Here's a reality. The reality is that we have homes out there that are in our city that need to be protected, I think, from what has been projected to be thirty thousand additional cars at, a day. That, not that it might not take a few years to get to that many cars a day, but thirty thousand a day is what is in their documents. I don't know if there's going to be a northern corridor, and none of us do, but I do know that we have homes in Green Springs and along Green Springs Drive, and at the top of Green Springs where the Washington, where the Washington Parkway, which would connect to the northern corridor, will be hugely affected. And what they have right now is real. What they have right now is that they believe that they're building next to a Habitat, that in the language is "in perpetuity" will be a Habitat. And here's on the other side, is the supposition that someday we're gonna have a northern corridor there, but it's in a Habitat which all the in holdings are being bought out of, all of the private holdings are right next to the Habitat, and there is no northern corridor in the Habitat, but there is certainly a Habitat that people brought, built next to. Well, the question is which of those two factors to Washington City is the most important? Is it the most important that we take care of the people that live in our city while not discouraging the idea of a northern corridor, discouraging the idea that that northern corridor would be anywhere close to those homes, and asking that that northern corridor be higher above or, or further above those homes so that it doesn't impact them? All right, so in my mind, we have a reality, we have a Habitat in perpetuity that's supposed to remain the way it is. There is a lot of energy going right now into building the northern corridor, and I agree that we need one. But when all those initial discussions about a northern corridor were made, there were no homes there. And we now have a significant number of homes and along Green Springs Drive that will be highly impacted if that occurs, the place that it's occurred. So I've given you a chance maybe to discuss and three possible motions that you might be willing to make as a council tomorrow in order to get some documents to those scoping meetings and to that council that is meeting and to those cooperating agency meetings that definitely and clearly represents our decision to defend the people in our city from an impact that is probably greater than any of us would want in the back of our homes. And I've just, you know, I'm cleaning up loose ends as I end my tenure here, but this is one that's been on the agenda for four years as long as I've been here, and I think it's time perhaps that we make our desires extremely clear. And, you know, I don't fault that the drawings happened the way the drawings happened, they happened without any homes there. But as those in holdings were taken and as that land became private, as developers started to move in and do that, I think that we have a responsibility to protect our city from the impact from the rest of the county that's gonna have on our city. I feel really good about northern corridor going to exit thirteen, I just don't think it needs to go and connect into the Parkway where those homes exist.
Having made your idea clear, like, that was a question I had, so if your feeling is, is it should not, it is from freeway to freeway, basically, no connection into our, to our community connectivity?
I really do think that. Now, I know that there's Washington Parkway that there are no homes in right now. Okay, and that's, I sit the land and stuff.
Yes, that follows into my next point. So, so if we do go with your idea, we move it to its own corridor up above where there's no homes today, what stops that from being the same process that we're going through today? Because originally this corridor was, was, was put in that way. Now the homes begin to build, it's like, oh, there's a, there's a corridor, we gotta move it now. So we, so we put it in a new corridor, homes begin to build, what happens then?
Well, I think, I think that's a good point, and I really think we as a council should take action on, on roads like that to protect future citizens from, from issues like this.
How do you do that without putting it on, you put it on your master transportation plan?
You put it on your master transportation plan, but you also put it on your, your building design plans, and you don't allow, you don't allow developers to put residential homes that exit directly onto major inter, intersections.
Well, there's nothing, none of those homes are coming directly onto that road, they all go into subdivisions and, and so you've got no homes built on that. So you've got the same scenario happening per se, unless you're just gonna build a road of its own that has no connectivity to anybody, which is...
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna build a, a highway like that, I, there's a lot of sense to make those, so there isn't connectivity in the same way that a, that a residential road. You're taking, you're basically taking a highway that goes, a multi-city highway and running it into the, into the residential roads of Washington.
But to me, that's what you, you want that connectivity, because what happens to our citizens up there? How do they benefit from it? How do they get out and get to St. George? How do they get out and get to exit thirteen?
You, you do want the connectivity, but do you want those on a street level?
Well, they can connect.
That's where, that's where the issue comes.
They can connect, our citizens can connect on the Washington Parkway.
But where does it take if you want to connect to the northern?
Well, it takes into the frontage and it takes into the exit thirteen.
What frontage?
So, so we?
The frontage that now exists.
Since the other day, so if, if I lived in Green Springs and I needed to get to Pine Valley, I would have been at exit thirteen to get over, to go up I-10. Towards the west side, you know? I understand your concern, but I did, I mean, I think the northern corridor needs to go in. Certainly, we've had this conversation, it's been contemplated for a long time to go and extension to Washington Parkway. So, I don't, you know, you used the word a minute ago, discourage. I don't want to do anything that would discourage the northern corridor or discourage the process.
Nor, nor am I trying to, but if those cars are all coming from other parts of the county to get to I-15, and we have some fairly easy ways to get to I-15 already, but they don't, okay? They don't, so if they're coming, and they can come up right below those cliffs where grapevine trail starts and move right into I-13, and it would impact homes very little. But as designed, it's going to impact our city a lot, and we're not in neglect on how to get onto I-15, we're doing that for the rest of the county. Well, I agree that we have a need, I agree that we have a need, but I don't think the need needs to go right to the middle of those homes. And I don't think it needs to go down.
I go back to the master plan, those homes want to work close when I wrote this master plan.
I understand that.
It goes back to the same push, and then I get into your thinking of saying, okay, so if we, if we push it to the north, do we, do we then move the whole HCP boundary beyond that, or are you using that as inside the HCP boundary?
I, you know, it, it would be in the boundary, probably.
So that goes to your trail access situation, so we've got the trails that are down here that have to then go across the freeway to, to access any?
Or start on the other side of the road, which would give them a great deal of good access to trail systems.
So then we're gonna have to build parking areas off of freeway interchange?
Yeah, we probably would.
And do you think the HCP's gonna let you do that?
Well, the HCP is supposedly not opposed to people in the HCP.
Doing people is fine, but, but build a freeway to start with, then put parking lots into it, I don't think you're gonna see that happen.
Well, we'll see what happens, you know, could be they have to go under the, under that road.
Can I jump on it, at a point, if you're done with that? I just, before we move off that subject, I wanted to throw a question in, similar to Councilman Turks, which is, does anybody think that messing around with the northern corridor and, and further entries up into the HCP could actually harm the process of renewal? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, we actually need to get a renewal on that, and, and to me, that is, that would be priority number one. I would want, I want to see that renewal happen.
Does it, does it harm the process likely?
Well, so, so explain to me how and why, because I, so, so ta, talk to me about that, how do you see that happening?
I can tell you, I've said at several meetings with the BLM through this renewal process, and that's why you see Mayor Pike worried about his, his electrical and his water corridors, is because they want those to disappear. They want nobody up there in, in a motorized vehicle, we want to move you along.
Well, I understand that, but is there, is there, and when you say "they," who?
BLM.
Is, so BLM, but is it BLM that's actually pushing for the renewal of this?
You know, I attend those meetings, I've heard no, I've heard no negativity about having utility corridors.
I don't know whether utility, like I said, the discussion we were in, we're in the road because they accessed their wellfields up in the old turkey farm road, and they were trying to shut that off, because part of the, part of the renewal process was to shut that off. And, and those are the meetings that I signed in as part of, we were arguing, look, we have utility corridors that need to be maintained up here, we have roadways that need to be maintained because we use those things. And they were saying, we want those to go away.
If we had the political will to get this pushed up in there, though, wouldn't that make in organizations like the BLM actually want to protect it more and renew it more so they had it locked down?
Well, you know, we, we can't stop the northern corridor.
Well, so I'm not specifically addressing the northern corridor here, what I'm, what I'm talking about is the change in the northern corridor which has an encroachment on the HCP.
Well, the, the, the scoping that they're doing right now is that they're to look at all, all alternatives. What I'm suggesting we do is we have them have one more alternative that we would like them to look at.
And, and I, I have a question on that, but I, my question here is, is just a nuanced one. I don't want to do anything in this process that would harm the renewal of the HCP. So if, if the politi, if the, if the political will of the people who are trying to push the, to get reinstatement of the HCP is damaged by us carving into it more, that's a concern to me.
So I'll tell you the reason why they pushed this, the bi-renewal process to where they have, is on the hopes that Donald Trump gets, doesn't get reelected, because they want to get, uh, uh, somebody that's more favorable.
On the northern corridor? Oh, oh, oh.
To shut it down and not, not allow it to get approved. Their, their, the BLM and Fish and Wildlife's concern is that...
But they want it, as much as they want it, and if...
No, they don't, BLM and Fish and Wildlife do not want a road up there.
Not a road, they want the HCP renewal, that's my, that's my question.
Well, by mandate, they have to renew. It's by, by mandate, well, I didn't say that they do, the county is pushing for that. Otherwise, every individual homeowner, as you build, has to do their own, it's not environmental, but it's a tortoise.
Right, the problem, the HCP was set aside initially to deal with the, the building industry, right? Up in Cedar City, if you can get a furry dog on your property, don't ever bother building on your property because they have nothing in place. People with desert tortoises, what, with the HCP, we call up the biologists, they come collect them, they relocate them, and we can, you know, people have to use their property. So that's why it was set aside, and the building industry's been funding this HCP in the HCP ever since. The BLM, Fish and Wildlife, don't, what, they want to keep it as an HCP. We need to renew it from, you know, development side and private oversight, but they don't, they don't want a corridor through there.
Yes, so I mean, if we, and if we, thank you for the clarifications on those, I meant it does answer my question, so, so on the northern corridor, tho, those same groups that want the HCP in and set, or to, you know, would likely fight us on any encroachment, including the current...
Well, but, but please understand that the northern corridor encroach, encroaches on the Habitat already significantly.
No, I know, but we would be, we would be asking for more to push it further.
Well, I ask you for more, but a relatively small amount.
And that's part of why she talks about these other alternatives that seem moved, from the Leeds alternative, to those have all been moved, trying to appease that group and to say, okay, how can we work with you? Well, we don't want you up here, okay, why don't we move you off? So that's why now the corridor comes clear down to the top of the ledges, is, is because of their saying, okay, if we can build a road, where's the least intrusive way we can do it so you can help buy into the process?
So to your earlier point, my thinking would be that what, if you put the northern corridor up there, it would be untouchable with building anyways, it's, you'd be, you'd be lucky to get it there and you'd be, and you wouldn't be getting building, I don't think you're gonna have the issue where they're gonna build right up to it again.
I think, I think it's...
No, not if you go into the corridor, I agree with you.
Well, I don't think if you look at where the corridor...
You can't get into it.
If you look where the corridor's currently drawn, you'll see that it avoided most existing homes, it avoided existing homes, but now it's not. If it hooks into Washington Parkway, it's not.
It did, in, in all fairness, it did not avoid existing, there were no existing homes when it was drawn. The developers built up to the right of way, well, Washington Parkway is what you're talking about.
Silver, silver, or stone bridge, look at all of those homes up there.
Well, and some of that alignment, some of the alignment has changed with the Washington Parkway working with SITL, and their development, and that's why, when, when you go back, that's why I was asking the question, if you're wanting to build another road up there, are you now gonna come back through SITL again and say, we want, we're gonna take some more of your property? You've worked with this in this alignment, now we're gonna come back and take some more of your property?
I think here's the difference, by the time SITL starts to build, the northern corridor will be settled.
I know.
Okay?
Maybe so, but it would be, it takes some more of SITL and where we have to buy it.
See, part of the reason that road now goes where it goes is working with SITL and their development, so now they've drawn around that road because it's the master plan.
And we're drawing around an illusion that hasn't occurred versus the reality itself, those homes are built.
They're all illusions, Councilwoman, they're all illusions.
I know, and we change them all the time. Really, we can't change this one, we can't suggest that they look at as an alternative something that's further north.
Well, I go back to what Councilman Ward said, and my feeling about it is, is if you, if you try to go anywhere further into that Habitat, the answer will be absolutely not. The only chance you have of getting a northern corridor is to tie into what we've got going and saying, here's the alignment we've always had, here's where we're always going with it, and we're staying with that. You try to push up and say, hey, we want to go up and across and take this much more, they're gonna say, uh, bitch.
Well, and they're making it very clear that as part of this scoping that they have to, they have to investigate every single alternative.
I think you're right, we went through that with our, with our main street interchange, we looked at every alternative.
So I wanna, yeah, I'd like to weigh in on that, is, just because you have it in on the scoping, I mean, this is a, is this a NEPA process? But even if you get it on the scoping, every part of the NEPA process is going to work against you, because residents do not rank very high.
That's right.
As far, your Habitat is gonna rank much higher, environmental impact is gonna rank much higher, just having it on that process will be a possible moral victory, but, and it'll cost them, it'll cost them some extra money to look at it, but every part of that NEPA process will tell them not to do it.
The thing that I struggle with on this whole concept, and I appreciate it being discussed so openly, it's helped me a lot, is I don't feel like neither the council nor their cooperating agencies haven't set forth a great corridor path. I feel what sometimes ends in is that X factor is sometimes development encroaches upon planning that's already been in place. If planning had not been in place and things had not been moving, I feel like this would be a much more flexible concept, and the relationships that we've set in place and the motions we've set in place have had much discussion, far more than we give credit. So that's the part where I struggle with this, is that I, I, I don't feel like there's a negligence in our part nor the cooperation lacking, I feel like just because development has encroached upon something that's been put in place, that becomes a unique thing to make the priority in our discussion.
But let, but let's say that, so the northern corridor is fine, there's really nothing wrong with the, with, excuse me, Washington Parkway is fine, there's really nothing wrong with it, right up until you connect in a northern corridor and you put that much extra traffic. And that's cut, to me, that's kind of the issue, which is, which is, you're, you're really kind of have, Washington Parkway is fine to run through those homes, have it right next to where they are for that level of traffic, but when you plug in a, a northern corridor, you, you tip, you tip that, to me, you tip that scale, and it's, it's not necessarily appropriate for the amount, for the, how, the proximity they are to the, to the residents.
How is it so, uh, Councilman?
Let me finish, though, on my point here, though, I, if, if you're gonna, so if you're gonna take an issue on this and you're gonna try and rectify that situation, and that's my opinion, if you agree with it or not, but if you're gonna try and rectify that situation, it's going to have to come to this city, this council, and, and these entities here in this room, I don't think you're gonna be able to trust the NEPA process and getting in on the alternatives will do anything for you. So that's my point.
Well, my, the only thing I was gonna say is, it's a, it's a parkway all the way through, it's an extension of Snow Canyon Parkway, it runs right through the middle of the trotting.
I think we've properly talked about it as a freeway, because it is to be an analog in comparison to Snow Canyon Parkway, and, and that is, that is not a freeway. It, it does have a significant amount of traffic, without a doubt, and, and once again, this is an illusion being drawn up as a concept and everything. I haven't heard anyone in the council say that this should not happen, there's an agreement that Parkway should happen. I think Councilman Granger and Ward have been talking.
But remember, if you, if you put that Parkway across there, there is absolutely nothing that will stop, because your major commercial draw is on exit ten, and there's nothing that's going to have that, that's gonna stop that traffic from coming across from multiple other cities and dropping right down into one of the worst issues you have in your city.
And I remember us talking about that not too long ago and bringing it up to a vote in which we denied the opportunity to pursue it at that time. So I feel like we addressed this six months ago and could have had a much more cordial and open conversation entering the conversation relationships, and we passed that opportunity up, that's what we decided to do with the council.
Well, you can lament that it, things weren't done in the past, but you never get now back.
Lamentations happening now.
If you're thinking, if you think you want to do something about it, there's no time like the present, because you are, you are losing time.
And that's what we said six months ago when we passed.
And I guess my thing goes back to exactly what you said, is I think if we tried to mitigate anything up in that preserve other than what is there, you hamper the process.
For the northern, for the northern corridor, but not necessarily for the Habitat. To me, to me, those are, they're very separate issues.
You see the negativity of having that connectivity, I see the positivity, our citizens being, getting out.
Yeah.
You're looking at stuff coming in, I look at our people being saying, hey, we can now get a crossover to St. George, we don't have to come down onto the Parkway and come through that interchange.
But value-wise, for me, Habitat, second is our residents up, and Habitat because of what it provides to our city and our residents up there, second would be our residents up there, and third would be the northern corridor, because honestly, the northern corridor is going to benefit other cities, our sister cities, which I... cities, which I think we should help if we can, but it benefits them far more than it benefits us.
Hey, I, I've had people tell me, it'll be nice to go and get over to 18 or 19.
Well, absolutely true, but the biggest part of that is because they hate going down to exit 10 and trying to maneuver through that, and if you put this in, you make that worse.
You give, you give people...
You give them an alternative, you give them an alternative if they just happen to be going across where the northern corridor would take them, but you will bring other traffic into that commercial area.
How are they getting there now? They're coming through your exit 10, they're just coming off the freeway.
Right. And that's a disaster down there. It's a known disaster for us.
So if you could bring them straight through, isn't that, I mean, if they, they're coming anyway. It's, it's not a matter of saying that they're not, they're not coming.
Well, I see, I see what they're talking about. They're saying, well, I hopey wishy, they're gonna come across here, they're gonna get exit 13, but they're not. They're gonna come straight down, they're gonna come straight down. They're gonna take Greenspring Drive and turn it into basically a freeway, a high-speed freeway, and they're gonna come straight down to that, to that commercial area. And the only way you're gonna solve that is if you, if you fully build out exit 13 in a commercial capacity to such an degree that it can actually start competing with the, the commercial that has had exit 10. But I don't see anything on the, on the plans currently, and we have some great plans for 13 right now, but I don't see anything on there that's gonna start genuinely pulling away at a rate that is actually faster than we're increasing in, in, in residents.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you want more time to discuss. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion tomorrow that we, um, uh, one of the three motions I stuck in front of you, uh, that we continue to support the idea that we need some alternative to be considered, um, that moves that away from those homes.
I haven't gone through your alternatives. Have you, which is your preferred? Do you have one?
Well, not necessarily, probably the second one. And, you know, I'll, I'll read it, 'cause it's, 'cause it's longer.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, "The early drawn routes for a hold for a northern corridor through the habitat were not disruptive to residents in Washington City, but as the private holdings have been and are being developed, the northern corridor and its extension onto Washington Parkway as currently described in several of the options would be disruptive to these residences. These homeowners have reasonably expected that the habitat as developed would remain as is into perpetuity. With requested changes to allow for the northern corridor, their homes and some future homes on these private lands would be greatly disrupted by the anticipated load of vehicles of up to 30,000 cars a day, where before there was just habitat and the anticipated Washington Parkway. It is therefore strongly felt that the impact of those homes in Washington City should be mitigated, and that any anticipated northern corridor should tie directly from Red Hills Parkway through to exit 13 and well away from current residents and away from any portion of the Washington Parkway that is an extension of the northern corridor and goes close to or through those residential areas." That's the strongest language of the three alternatives.
I think that you somewhat contradict yourself, though, with that, for the mere fact, uh, fact that you, you talked about the habitat being this tranquil place that people are building to, and now in the bottom end you say, push the corridor up there.
Well...
You're saying that we, they built there anticipating a habitat, not having any interaction with, with anything but nature and none of that, and then in the next bottom section we say, that's where we want the corridor to go.
I'm not saying I want the corridor right behind their homes or through their homes.
As I read it, that's what I hear you say, is we want it pushed forth into the, into the habitat, which, in the first part you're saying, people have built here because of the habitat, they want the tranquility of the habitat, and then we turn around and say, well, we don't want the corridor here, we want it up in the habitat.
Well, the corridor is in the habitat.
Not in our city, it's not.
That's right. Not in our city.
That's right. But what you're saying is you want it pushed into the habitat.
Well, why can't we push it into the habitat if St. George pushed it into the habitat?
I, I don't know if St. George pushed it into the habitat. In fact, the habitat existed across there from the end, but even at that, I guess I, I go back to your, to your thought process of what we have written there and saying, these residents have all located here because of habitat, the tranquility that we provide, and now we don't want that corridor here, we want it pushed into that habitat. So we contradict ourselves.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Maybe you can come up with some better language. I don't see the contradiction, because I think on the one side we're trying to cooperate with the idea of the northern corridor, on the other side we're trying to protect, um, our citizens, and yes, there needs to be protection for the habitat too, but that's some other people's responsibility also. And it's not totally protected, as we all know, because most of the northern corridor goes right through the habitat. Just not in our city.
Can I ask the $64,000 question? Do you want to vote on this tomorrow?
I'll tell you what my vote would be. If you wanna vote on it, it would be no, so.
I mean, if you're gonna, if you're not gonna have a...
Probably wanna put it on, but...
I'm just trying to get a feel for the council, would you like it on or not?
Well, are we getting a revote here?
Well, I guess I am. I've just kinda seen, I'm just trying to feel the temperature.
Mayor, I think the discussion has led to the discussion...
Are you asking, should we, should we remove, is there, is there a desire from the council to remove that agenda item? Is that what you're asking?
I guess so.
Mayor, I feel that it's not inappropriate to let the, the motion stand as something that concerns the council to be discussed. Um, we really haven't made this a precedent beforehand to move any motions from what already announced.
Okay.
If there was a developer that backed out due to a, a issue with plans or whatever, we've been open to as the day up, but I feel like letting the council discuss things and vote upon things the next day is not a negative concept and it's respectful to the council to propose that.
Well, and it wouldn't hurt to have, it's not gonna hurt the NEPA process to have alternatives on there that, that they look at. I, I don't hold out a lot of hope that they're gonna...
Maybe so, but is, is it, um, during the scoping and during the process of NEPA process, that's where those alternatives get suggested? Do we by a motion force it from the council, I mean, from, coming from the council carries a different, a different weight? I have, I've been struggling with this one before in the last three to eight quarters. I sat down for a couple hours on Saturday. I, I feel her concerns, I understand her concerns, but I also have challenges with the fact that it's been on our master plan since 1986. And, and that predates every single home that's up there, every single one. I, I also have challenges with the idea that we're gonna do a corridor that we're basically not gonna have, or a corridor potentially comes through that. We have no tie-in for our residents' use. I mean, that Greenspring Drive and Main Street is the tie-in for our own master plan.
It's not that far to go, tie-in on exit 13.
So if you, for you to get to Funny Valley, you wanna put exit 13 in back, would you go down to exit 10, log up exit 10 and hit Skyline 5?
No, I would prefer to go up to 13, it's very close.
You know, I, I think that it, it, it does free up Greenspring's traffic from not having to use exit 13. At least a portion of it, to be able to have that corridor. Certainly, it brings traffic down and, and it also brings it into that commercial base too. And sales tax is what pays for our general funds, so we can keep property taxes low. And most of that, with the exception of Costco, and Sportsman's Stars, it's our sales tax rules.
Mayor, if you're asking what's the council's feeling, I hope the discussion has helped give some perspective. I don't see anything negative unless there's some insight that I can gain from further discussion of, of bringing it forth tomorrow. Would it, is there a concern that it's something that should not be discussed beyond this meeting, or is it something that can go forward and kind of understand, would like to understand the concern better?
Can I mention, because I was in, we, we, the three of us spent time in that meeting together, and I think the only reason the mayor's kind of asking this is because if there was a discussion and feel of a specific direction by the council, we would work on language to be adopted on Wednesday. At this point, I, I don't see a problem with voting on it. You're just gonna have to articulate it in the meeting tomorrow, and if you want it to come back, it'll be a different council that comes back too. That's why I think the mayor's just asking just simply that much. Again, I don't think, from my perspective, that there's a problem, but we will not have any language drafted, um, based upon tonight's meeting for you to consider tomorrow. But if you want to, and you can just say, hey, we like number two, then that's acceptable. Or if you wanna work Smith it tomorrow, you can work Smith it tomorrow, but you'd be voting on whatever that language is. This council would be voting on whatever that language is.
With that information being brought forward, I, with that being brought forward, I appreciate the concepts being brought. I do not feel comfortable with any of these, to that, wholly as a council member, from my perspective. That helps answer the question better.
I know you, I know you'd wanna be put on the spot on this one.
I knew I should've been sick tonight.
So, like, again, I mean, I struggle with the idea of something coming from the council because it carries a different weight, but what's, through the NEPA process, certainly staff can suggest, hey, look at another route.
You bet.
As an alternative.
Yes. Staff, uh, public, anybody can suggest another route to be looked at. Normally, when we get into a process like this, they will take pencil drawings, if anybody does, and then it's kind of like when we did the exit 11 stuff. We started out and every person on the committee laid out a different idea, and we took those ideas and narrowed them down on feasibility, you know, can it actually be constructed, and narrowed them down that way, and that's what this process will do, is they'll look at all sorts of different possibilities and narrow them down, and come to the point where they have a preferred alternative.
So there was a drawing. Did you do it, Barry? Somebody did a drawing before when it was, when it was brought up to move it, uh, east and drop it in state trust.
I did, I did one.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
So certainly couldn't that be dropped in as a proposed alternative?
It could.
So it would cross, it would cross the top of Greenspring's, on the northern corridor, but that alignment would go, would drop down so far in, in the...
Well, I'm just saying, if, if...
I'm trying to envision what...
Part of what they have to look at is alternative routes, and there's already something that's drawn up.
I believe we went through the habitat around the existing development of Greenspring, so kept it up high.
Yeah.
Took it out over the wash. One of the issues was the cost of construction. Over the washes, there was, I think, three washes that we had to cross, and it was to the west...
The east.
Or the east.
So one of Councilman Granger's frustrations and...
Frustrated?
You know, I mean, me elaborating, but she says there's, you know, several different routes that all terminate in, uh, Washington Parkway, which I understand why they've done that. Um, and she's not seeing any additional route, where we've already got it drawn up after we submitted this, here, look at this, this is an alternative route.
It could, yes.
And I, and I'm not even proposing we tell them exactly the route. You know, this language suggests that they look at anything that moves that road away.
Yeah, I think they'd go a lot further if we actually had a route.
But I think we already, you know, back to the, the one that we already did adopt, uh, a year and a half ago, we already adopted a language. It's on, it's on record from the council.
Yes, and I think my impression, and I think it's St. George's impression too, is that they haven't really paid any attention to that. There's a feeling that we need some stronger language and action for them to pay some attention to it. We don't, we can't stop the northern corridor, we're not trying to stop the northern corridor, we're just trying to help some people who have homes on the habitat.
Do you think you want Fish and Wildlife or...
Well, I, there are a lot of entities sitting at that table that represent a lot of groups. You know, I can't tell you what they're gonna do, and I don't even know if we'll ever have a northern corridor. I know one of the reasons, um, for not attaching to the Washington Parkway is right now, we're not gonna get that money from the state, um, uh, transportation to help us with the Washington Parkway. And if it goes up higher and doesn't connect through the Washington Parkway, we don't have to pay for that. Um, and I know we are hoping for some money to help us pay for the Parkway, and if it, if it, you know, I don't know, I don't, I, yes, I think it would cost more to run it higher, and I think it won't be Washington City's money that has to do.
Mike, the alignment that you're, you and Councilman Bellisdon have been talking about, talk to me about how residents, 'cause I can't really picture that, how would residents actually access, um, get up into the, the HCP if that was in place?
Uh, there'd have to be crossings put in place to cross it. We didn't, we didn't look in depth that in depth.
What would be the likelihood of, well, I guess it's all theoretical at that point, get the road in, then you start asking for crossings, and then you start...
Well, just even moving this section through Washington up into the HCP is gonna...
Yeah.
Really cause a lot of heartache on their end, adding more take area. And this is also, the, the area that needs for the northern corridor, they'll be compensated for with other ground that, that, that they're trying to acquire habitat.
And the ground that we have to offer isn't nearly enough.
Well, no, they're talking about a sizable, uh, portion of habitat, uh, where turtles are, not declared habitat below Sun River, that they want to trade for the, the corridor that they want to put through, because there's a lot of turtles down there they discovered. So that's, that's the trade that is the discussion for that road.
Well, right, right now, the northern corridor is, would be 160 acres, correct?
I don't know.
I think it's somewhere in that habit. 160, 180 acres. The ground that she's talking about that would be compensated to the HCP is about 6,400 acres.
And we would actually land bake some of those for future.
Which is a reason to think that it's not such a big deal if some more of the northern corridor goes through the habitat than is currently in the habitat.
We're not talking about, there's already a home in the, um, that's swapped.
From your perception, you're correct. From their perception, environmental community is interested in that.
Unfortunately, they're very reasonable.
Yeah. I will share with you one experience I had in that meeting, which I found very interesting. Uh, meeting with the BLM, and, and the question was asked is, what is the reason for the habitat? Why do we have it? And he said, for the tortoise. The whole goal was to, to rehabilitate the tortoise, be like the grizzly bear, bring it off the endangered species list, or, and, uh, this was actually representative, Stewart's representative in the meeting, so he, he asked, so, we've been doing this for 20 years, how are we doing? He said, we have half as many tortoises as we, we're half what we started with, but we're not making any changes up here.
Well...
So that's the mentality you're playing.
To be a little more fair, the last report that I heard of the tortoises, and it comes up in the HCP meeting as well as northern corridor, is that there has been some significant recovery.
Correct. Well, there's, there's been, and that was part of the argument we were using by getting the corridor in, is it would be a fire burn, and some of those things that we were using that as the argument, and so, like I said, it was very interesting sitting in those meetings and listening to, to the reasoning behind some of us, is, the fact that I got was, we don't wanna change anything, we don't want you up here, stay out.
I can tell you that I've made a very careful study of that habitat up there, and I've seen 500% more in the last seven years than I have ever seen before.
So you saw six instead of zero?
No, I said five instead of zero.
Five instead of zero.
Because I, because I moved here. You're welcome. I did, I like to bring my own...
We'll, we'll go ahead and keep it on the agenda tomorrow night.
Move on to item three, discussion and review of vacation rentals.
Mayor, I just wanted to bring up an item that we've been talking about quite a bit, and I don't have a big preparation on that, nor does it necessarily take a lot of time. But at one time, we talked about the possibility of, of putting a hold on any additional short-term rentals, because we need a time to study what the impact is on the city, and perhaps to create some design standards. I'm hearing about some of those short-term rentals that have, I don't know, six bunk beds in a room. And one of our discussion has been if, if the short-term rental market crashed, could those units convert to affordable housing? And I, I think that unless there's some diet, design standards of what affordable housing would look like, the answer maybe is no. And, and the other consideration is, I'm already hearing rumors that, you know, people buy into condos or timeshares or whatever, and they expect they're going to make a lot of money because it's always going to be rented. And then those people are stuck with some expensive property that they're not getting their money out of when it starts to go for sale. There is a market for affordable housing. We all know that. But we also know if we've ever had timeshares, that that market is really not a pleasant market to be on the other side of. Anyway, I just wanted to bring up those points. I, I don't know if the council is ready to take a motion tomorrow that suggests that we put a hold on short-term rentals. But I think the idea that the council has made it clear that we're uncomfortable with that is not the same as the council making a motion. So, that's, that's the discussion I have.
So, if we did put a hold on vacation rentals for moratorium loans.
Well, first of all, you don't have any of these three, next three items on tomorrow's agenda, and it's because it would require a temporary ordinance to be developed. Clearly, we're not in a position to be able to make a temporary ordinance.
But even then, it's temporary, right?
Six months.
Six months, and then, you know, I can tell you that my feeling right now, based on the last couple of years of how things have gone, there wouldn't, there'd be a thousand less titled vacation rentals in the city. Because I wouldn't. They barely got approved on a three-two vote from the start.
That's true. When they changed that policy, was it a three-two vote? It was a previous?
Three-two votes to approve them from the start. And then, since then, there's, there hasn't been, there's been issues there with, you know, some of the ordinance. But I think we're at a saturation point. The market's saturated. You know, to, I don't see.
We're not crashing, but we're sliding.
Well, it's, I don't know that it's even a crash. I just think that, you know, I've already talked to Paul West. They've said, hey, we're saturated out. We're not looking at doing more vacation rentals. Because we don't know the markets they're for.
Well, I think some market forces are going to help us in that respect.
I agree. I think that.
It's all going to be apartments now.
Yeah, there is that market. But, but really, let's say that some of these, some of these overnight vacation rental projects, we've, we've asked for more amenities. We've asked a little bit higher standard to it. And so, if they do end up softening it down, and it's not overnight rentals that they're being purchased for, they're entitled as townhomes that families can buy.
And if they are constructed in a way that makes that reasonable, you know, but I'm not sure some of what's happening.
So, just can I get a.
A lot of townhome projects that don't have near the amenities that some of these do. So, if something like that, you've got some additional amenities and additional parking that we require, you know, then I don't see that as a bad thing.
But you'd almost, you'd almost need to put some design standards to a definition of affordable housing before you did that, and then, and then have them required to be a dual purpose. I'd almost rather just see your kind of moratorium. We, we all kind of agreed that, we really agreed, well, some expressed concern about the number of that are here, and I, I hope to talk with other council members in the next council.
Yeah, that's kind of my feeling. You've got a random council to come on. I would let them make those decisions. I certainly can appreciate you sharing your concerns and the vision.
That's it.
Of this council, some of the things that we've learned from decisions we've made, and that next council can then have to follow those.
We have a lot of case studies.
Well, and I think there's probably a, a need for some input from people that are involved with it, and that there are people we need to listen to before a decision. But I did want to bring it up because I think it's a fairly large issue for us.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that one? Item four, then, discussion review of parks.
Really, this is just about the size of the parks and getting that in some kind of policy ordinance that suggests that we're willing to have smaller parks in order to develop neighborhoods without their requirement that they be the size that they are now.
We just, we just did the canyon park, it's an acre and a half. And it ended up, where did you end up on that? Million and three? And, and shooting star park was? Yeah, so, the cost that goes into them is fairly comparable, but, you know, with the size, certainly, with the size. I don't think we need to do four-acre parks all the time. We've got to have, you know, fair enough amenity there.
I think I just, creating time for a reasonable discussion about what size would we want to do, and if there's no motion on the agenda for tomorrow, then it really is for a future council to debate. I think it's, you know, it's make the statement that if we're trying to create a sense of belonging and, and place for people in the future of the city, that the size of those parks is pretty important.
I, I would love to see a situation or a, a design of, of a park proposed that would, that would fit this and, and try to work through that. I, I guess I'm a little bit short-sighted. I can't, I can't picture that without a specific park proposal maybe.
I, I think there is somewhat of a need, as Councilwoman Granger has, because in the past, we said if it's going to be a city park, it needs to be four-acre. Da-da-da-da. And sometimes there's some places that topography or some of those things is much more conducive to a, to a tighter, smaller, as long as the amenities that go into there fit what, what we're trying to achieve there. Just like, as mentioned, this is not here. I tried to take my grandchildren out to the, to the Hellhole Trail Park, is what I still refer to it as, over Thanksgiving, and it was, I couldn't, there was no place to park.
It's busy.
The garden was packed.
And it's a small park.
And whatnot. And so, those are very well-used when the right amenities are put into them. And so, I look and say, absolutely, in some of these other areas, I look at the one that's down off of, that St. George's put in on, on 3050, going down, it should make the turn, and it's right up against the bank, and they use the bank, and they've got a nice little pavilion at the bottom. I don't know what's there, maybe an acre and a half, maybe two acres.
Yeah, they're small. It's right there.
But that thing gets used to death because of the topography, and they've got ivy and walls up the hill. So, there's areas, I think, that absolutely you can utilize that and achieve what you want to do with much less. Now, expense-wise, it's probably sixes because you've put more into the infrastructure.
I think in response to Councilwoman Moore, if we're looking for analogs within our city, one true is the Hellhole Trail Park. I mean, it is a unique canyon trail. But, yeah, one that serves as what we can do in a smaller space, just the improvements that were made here at the Veterans Park. That place is hot, is popping with people. It's wonderful to see kids and families, and it, it's got all the right things around it where it accommodates the concept of the needs of a family at the park. It's got the restrooms, the water, the shade. I mean, that, that's as important as air in Southern Utah. We're going to do something. And, and I think these new little parks have really shown viability of that, of just really doing a smaller park. And what made these in our city more valuable is their connectivity to other things. This smaller addition here to Veterans, as I see it, is connected to a larger park, but the Canyon's Trail Park is connected to Trail System. And so, I think it talks, it gives us more things to consider in just size. But at what point is this, you know, important to connect things with? So, I, I agree with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Granger that we can consider smaller parks and get just as much value out of them. We see more people at a lot of these parks than we do in our markets. And that's just a great amenity to our community.
Well, and I agree with the statement. It's, we, it depends on the topography and maybe the cooperation of some developers. We don't know what that size is, but we need to create for Barry and the city some flexibility in that size and not hold it to this. It's got to be four. And, you know, I don't know, it's too late to get a motion on that tomorrow, but I think this is the council that's, that's seen that and conceptualized it.
Oh, I think you've got a couple that could carry it forward.
Okay.
I agree with you. I, I really am looking forward to our concept of some more parks. I have no problem, you know, discussing this as a report if it can't be done tomorrow. It definitely is a need that I think that we should have.
Well, it can't be done tomorrow. It's a statement. Totally said, but, um, I, yes, and, and, and the discussion we've had up to this point, I think, has all been beneficial, and especially to the council members that'll carry this over. Because as you, as you remember, we've had discussions about how this stitches in with density bonus, how this stitches in with, with required amenities. What do we want to see in these things as a contribution? And, and again, I think in some cases, our four, four acres really are more parks that are geared towards regional, or not regional, citywide recreation. And so, yes, I agree, four acres are kind of the recreation components, because that's very hard to do on an acre. But parks that are not recreation, programs oriented, and that's kind of trying to stitch that together. And I think with the planning, it's going to be happening out in the fields.
And even if they're a practice field, you know, because then, when they go to do the big citywide competitions or whatever, then they've had a practice field to practice on. They can go over there, and that doesn't have to require the same cost and, yeah. But it could be a facility that could be useful to a neighborhood that's trying to get ready for a citywide competition. So, anyway, thank you for that one.
Thank you. Item five, council review, discussion and review of cultural, cultural arts.
Yeah, there, there's a number of documents. Did they get the documents? These cults. Just, we'll make this one again brief. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to monopolize the whole meeting. In discussing a meeting about the cultural arts and the need for a cultural art committee eventually, and housing, and how do we spend the rap money? Some proposals have been put forth, and I'll just leave that for you to read. The one is my summary of what the needs for some organization relative to the arts. And then, an initial proposal isn't the big committee and everything. It's that we start by allowing Floyd Rigby to support the formation of a city choir or chorus. And we accept his willingness and enthusiasm to initiate that effort. He needs a place to rehearse, and I think that he wants to contact other organizations to see if they're interested, like any of the churches, which would mean then if, if it was a Lutheran church, for example, some of their members might be outside of our city boundaries. So, for you to consider, is, is that okay? You know, if it, some of the Pine View students and some come from another city, is that okay, even though the focus would be on Washington? Okay, just a thought about that. And then, the second thought is that he'd be allowed to advertise with the resources that we have, and that you perhaps organize a small committee to seek a more permanent housing option. And we've talked a little bit about that as a council too, whether some housing might become available. But that would be, and then the last is eventually to form a Washington City Arts Council. And I've, I've given a number of documents that he's put together relative to what the content of that might be. I, I'm hesitant to take more time than that, except I think that he would need some money to start to buy some music and have access to a piano, which I think there may not be a piano in the Historical Society, which is a place where they could meet in that hallway out there in the, where they used to have basketball and stuff. So, I mean, that's the suggestion, and I hope that you'll read the thing, the reason for that that I put together. It suggests how, I think our city is of a size now where the cultural arts create a real connection between people, where not only they can participate and listen to and see performances, but they can participate in those performances and create some sense of meaning and, and connection to the city for people. And I feel like sometimes they move in and never get connected, especially some of our more senior citizens who don't have children and don't have teams that they go to, and they sometimes get discouraged about their ability to make the kind of connections that give them a sense of place. And cultural arts can be a real asset in the community to that.
I'd just like to say, because we've, Councilwoman Granger and I visited about this on an occasion, I, I really strongly support this because I do think we've grown. You know, I look back to when we gave money to the Washington Band, and they had a great desire, more than anything, to gather together and play their instruments. And they do, you know, a handful of events a year, and I think they do a great job, and they get what they want to get out of it. We've met with, as you know, Art Around the Corner, and I know that's a visual art thing, but I hope that would fit within all of this as well.
Also, too.
And they have a strong interest eventually in coming over here. We just have to provide some, some locations and some pedestals. But I, I think that we are to the point now that it would be kind of interesting to see how we can do with that. And for heaven's sakes, Floyd's a good ear.
He'll make it happen, and I think the narrowness of what we're asking him to do rather than a whole arts council, which really needs to be with 100% support of the city council and the city and all the ways you can think to do that. So, I don't know that we're ready for a, a, a large developer arts program in the city yet. But a really good start is start to look at what we could do with this musical program and start looking for a building, and then, then eventually to put together a council, I think. So, really saying those are some recommendations, and I probably won't be the one to follow up on them.
Any other discussion on that? Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that. I think we all are in favor moving that forward. You new council members love to rock and roll with it. Okay, move on to item six, discussion and review of proposed amendments to the city code, modifying regulations for sections nine dash eight A, eight A dash six, nine dash eight B dash six, nine dash eight C dash six, and nine dash eight D dash six. Applicant, Washington City.
Let me just jump back. City manager, I think you have that thicker document that I left you, the only copy of that talks about what the council together. See that they get that.
Well, Council, thanks for letting me come tonight. I just wanted, after the last time we went through our subdivision ordinance, I thought this would be a better opportunity. We could kind of go through, as I've looked through the agenda tomorrow night, it scares me to death, you know. So, I wanted to get through some stuff tonight so we could just move hopefully through these five ordinance. These are things that we've talked about a lot over the last anywhere from six months to a year and a half, of putting these in place. This first one is, as mayor stated, it, it covers a lot of those areas. It did a lot of sections, but it's because you find the same wording in a lot of your residential zones. We just wanted to mod, do the modifying regulations. I think what drove this was the day after I saw the erection of the big metal building in the gentleman's backyard on telegraph, and he met every one of the criteria for a detached accessory structure, and I thought, oh, my goodness, we need to look at that. And so, I contemplated that for quite a while, and everything in red is, is the stuff that's actually, I've, I've kind of broken it up. It's written differently, but the, the new stuff is basically in red. All the other stuff was either a sentence, but I just gave it a, a letter as, you know, these kind of conditions and restrictions. So, just going through for side yards, we just wanted to talk about detached one-story private garages and other accessory buildings and structures. Now, the newness is in B, but I'll just read the whole thing. The detached accessory building or structure is 20 feet or less in height. That's how it reads right now. Wanted to add that which is in red. Additional height may be acquired by moving the building or structure inward into the lot. For each foot added to the side yard setback beyond the three foot is what they can go to now, an additional foot in height could be added to the structure. But in no case shall the detached accessory building or structure be taller than the main building. Now, you can play with that a little bit, but I just feel that's, again, I go back and I see a 1,200-square-foot home sitting on a corner lot, and then I have a, you know, 4,000-square-foot detached accessory structure in the backyard. That's, and the home is probably 13 feet at its peak. This thing's at 20. Still meets the 25% of the backyard, but you can see it just, all of a sudden, I realized we could end up having a lot of that. I thought we'd try to get out on the front end of it. And I, I debated on this height, and again, this will help you folks. If people want to get that additional height, I tell them, hey, just move it in for every foot. So, that'll keep you from having those special meetings of giving height waivers, because probably half of them that you've done now were been for a detached building in the backyard going above the 20 feet. backyard going above the 20 feet. So this will at least give them an option. They, now there's times they may not be able, they're just going to be stuck because their yard's not big enough to move it in, so they'll have to come for those, but I think this could help eliminate most likely maybe half of, if not 70% of people having to go for the city council on the height waiver.
I like the wording there too, of not being taller than the main building.
Yeah.
It makes it kind of some uniformity in there. Say you have taught all here.
Right. And having the primary structure, which is what the zone is for, and then having the accessory be a monster. So, and that's what that is. So then moving on, again, we kept the corner lots, C and D are already in there. E is new, in no case shall the square footage of the detached accessory building or structure exceed 50% of their, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to E. This is the one I struck this afternoon. Because if I put this in place now, the shade structure, which is in number two, we never put a limit on those and I don't want to go back and change that. So I've struck out letter E just for you already. In the side yard I did, just didn't, I eliminated that because it didn't make sense with the item number two in that same area for the side yard, which you approved a couple of years back for shade structure. So I've already eliminated E and just letting you know, I'm taking that out and that it'll be out of the ordinance tomorrow night as well.
Do you feel like it's covered in F then?
Well, you know what? You know what I did? I eliminated actually both of those now. I eliminated one of them on Friday, eliminated both of them because again, we don't have a limit in the shade structure area and I don't want to go back and cause a conflict.
No, but boy, there's a difference between an accessory building and a shade structure. Those accessory buildings is bigger than half the size of the.
They are, but when you go and read the, I'm just going to let you, I'm going to go down here, just briefly on these. The shade structures came about, people have to attach them to the side of the home. And again, I think the mayor and Councilman Turk are the ones that are on here, it just preceded the other four council members. But we had an individual build one without a permit and did it and then came back and pleaded, you know, before the council to have the code changed and he made an application to do it and the council granted that. And these were the items that they ended up adopting was that you have to have a six-foot high masonry wall, it has to be attached to the house, can't be any wider than 20 feet, can't get any closer to the property line than two feet at its farthest structure, but we didn't put a limit down because they could put the shade structure down the whole side of the home. Now, I know it sounds, but I could take you to places, because it is open on all three sides, it's not as aggressively hard on your eyes or the use of the neighborhood.
I don't have a problem with the size of the shade structure, but a building that large.
Well, you might want to say that if they have a bigger side yard, we could do that.
Didn't we in our, I'm trying to remember in our detached ordinance, that structure ordinance, did we say it could be larger than 50%? Take up 50% of the back?
It's actually 25% because that's always been in the code.
Okay, so let's, we got something there, some protection.
Yeah, so in case if I just take out, if I take out F, I could leave E, in no case shall the square footage of a detached accessory building or structure exceed, we could, we could leave E in. If you want to go to 25 or 50% in the side yard, I'll leave that to you, but I think F needs to come out because of the shade structure and we're kind of repeating what E would have anyway. So let's leave E in and you decide whether you want 25 or 50% in the side yard.
But one is 50% of the square footage of the main building, the other is 25% of the available area back there, which both of those kind of work for me. I mean, you just don't want an accessory building takes up 50% of your backyard. I mean, I wouldn't think.
Okay, yeah. Well, I agree. Now that we're thinking through this, we could actually leave, what we'll do is that in no case in the side yard, take 50% of the main building. We'll leave that in there like that. And in F, we'll just take out shade structure off of it. We'll say detached accessory buildings or structures cannot take up more than 50% of the side yard. Is that, we good with that?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
Bring it together.
I like that. Then we'll do that and leave those there. So this is the side yard. This is the language for the side yard. Now we go into the rear yard. Again, letter B is pretty much the same as it was in the side yard language. You know, the height will be limited or if you, again, move it inward, you can get another foot. And then in D, in no case shall the square footage be 50% more than the main building and accessory building structures also cannot take up more than 50%. Oh, hell, I went to 50% here. But it probably should be 25 because we have a conflicting code. So I'll change that back down to 25%.
You're really going to keep that on your code patch?
Yeah, that's what, it will. I need to, I do need to tweak that one up, so. Because it is, you know, we limit it in our other code reference at 25%, so I think we better keep that one the same in there. Any questions on detached accessory structures then?
Say your question again, sorry.
Any other questions on this particular thing so we can? Yep, that's what, I'll get that one for that rear yard. That's an easy fix. And then I'm just taking out accessory on that other one, the shade structure wording out of it. And we'll still leave it in on that, on the side yards. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I think we got that one and we'll have that finished up for tomorrow so you can kind of move that one fairly quickly if you'd like.
Thank you, Drew.
Tomorrow night after your public hearing.
Appreciate it. You might as well stay there.
Yeah.
Item seven, discussion and review of proposed amendments to the city code for detached accessory dwelling units, section nine dash eight A dash seven and nine dash eight B dash seven.
Okay, I just basically put a copy of the ordinance in. You can refer to your other items in your packets, but did any of you have any questions? This is a brand new ordinance, so there is no red strikes because there's, it's all new language. We're not replacing anything. We're actually adding a number seven subsection at the end of these two titles of nine dash eight A and nine dash eight B and putting in the allowance for detached accessory dwelling units. So I hope that if you had a chance to read through it, if you want, we can hit some of the highlights, but I think we've, we've talked about this.
Yeah, talked about some of the issues that we bounced back and forth on.
Well, I think the one you got stuck on the most, as I remember, and I think we talked about this at the planning commission as well, is this particular phrasing right here in purpose and intent to, at the, at the last sentence, the detached accessory dwelling unit may only be used for the housing of family members. We went over this, I think, every which way you could, and I think I just finally came to it and just said, you know what, we're going to have to just, instead of trying to get so defined towards someone says, well, what about my mother's brother's dog groomer's sister's cousin? You know, I'm being a little facetious, but sometimes we'll get into that about specific family members. I think when people ask me, what does family members, I'll say it's basically immediate. It's your kids, your parents of each spouse. You know, now someone's going to say, well, I've got a cousin this. I'm just going to say, this is what the code is. I'm not going to tell them we're going to be out headhunting for people who are putting their niece and, you know, niece that just got married and they need a place to stay for six months. I, I don't know if I'm going to get too bent out of shape, as long as I know it's a niece, it's going to be gone, so.
I think we want our intent to be clear somewhere, whether it's general language or not, we're trying to help families out.
We're trying to help families.
And we recognize that sometimes the aged and the youngsters need some additional help.
Yep.
A place to live, usually short term, but at least a place to live.
And that's why I just determined to leave it to family. Again, if we start getting into, you know, well, how come, you know, a first cousin once removed versus a, I don't want to get into those, those, you know, so specific and calling out, you know, sons, daughters, mother-in-law, father-in-law, mother, father. I'd just as soon leave it family members and we'll tell them what our intent is, is family members for family. So I think just to answer Councilwoman, that's, that's kind of was one of the, the only hangups when it came down to it after we eliminated all the other stuff that I think was still just kind of hanging out there. And again, we could run through the general standards real quick if you'd like. Only one accessory, you know, dwelling unit per property. You got to have a 10,000 square foot lot minimum. You got to meet all the setbacks that we talked about. Number three, the square footage can be up to 650 square feet and that's the max, but shall not be greater than that. You know, we did put a limit, it can be 50% of the existing home, but not to exceed 650. So if I have a 1,100 square foot home, my accessory dwelling unit can only be 550. This is 50% of that until you get into your bigger homes. We went into the detached, the height, we said no more than 17 feet or no higher than the existing residence.
I thought we went back and forth on that.
We did. We started at 13 and we talked about, so I think everybody felt comfortable with 17. Everybody felt 13 was too, too low maybe because of other circumstances that may be, you know, with this. And I think everybody felt good.
That's pretty congruent with our other detached.
It is. It'll fall a lot of line. Again, I think the biggest thing is, is that can't be any higher than the existing home is the one I'm more worried about than anything. Now, we went into it's got to be 10 feet away from the existing residence and has to be for a detached dwelling unit, five feet away from each property line. And remember, I explained that to you because that's the building code, that's where it changes. And we don't want to have to get into people more than three, closer than three feet and we have to worry about design and firewalls and this way it just keeps it cleaner for a detached dwelling unit, just five feet off of the property line. Now, we talked about a parking stall will be required. We finally just came, you know, instead of doing the tandem thing and all that, we just said, you need to provide one that's nine feet wide, 19 feet long, because that's what our parking stalls are in our city.
So at 19 feet, you can park two in that basically, right?
If you're doing the Fiat minicars. No, I'm just saying that, no, they have to provide.
The way you throw in there is going to have two cars.
Well, I, I know, but we're saying that they have to at least provide.
Yeah, you're providing one, so you're throwing an extra car or something. What I'm saying is if you don't two are going to show up, why don't you provide two?
Well, that's, if you guys, I'm, I'm just, if that's what the council wants to do, I'm fine. We could say two additional onsite parking stalls should be provided somewhere on the property.
Usually if it's ground on ground, probably still most of the time coming from the car.
Yep.
Correct. I mean, whatever.
Now, if they come from Europe, can we allow them just one? I'm just.
Depends on what your heritage is.
You have to show records.
How long is a car? How long is a car?
Cars anywhere from 15, trucks are about 20 to 22, depending on what they have hanging off the back.
Yeah, see that, it means for trucks.
Well, I, but we, I don't, again, I'm trying to keep consistent and I, sorry, but I put 19 inches on there, didn't I?
Yeah.
That's a real short.
That's.
Well, we'll change that too.
That's pretty specific.
One of these are already popped up down in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
That was built and is now being surrendered to two different families. So it's, it's serving as a duplex per se, with four cars that are now spilling into the cul-de-sac and it's really just.
I feel that as a council.
Councilman, I have two words for you. Code compliance.
I think one thing with us, Councilman Turk, that I appreciate is we have really ran into the concept of what is acceptable parking for, I think, and I feel anything less than two is really putting us behind the ball on any need that could happen. Though it is more parking and it's an additional opportunity that may account for housing. So I don't see a need for us to decrease our parking capacity, even if it's just a visitor. I can, there's just been so many things where we've seen that because we went low on the parking, it created just unintended consequences and it'd be better to put some foresight into it. So I agree with you, Councilman Turk.
Now, again, so we'll go to two and I'll just tell you how we're, the staff's going to look at this. If they have, if they meet whatever the residential thing is, you know, the two parking stalls for a home, one has to be covered, not covered, but these I'm not going to, we'll get into that, but as long as they can show somewhere, if they have a slab of concrete off to the side that meets that, we're going to say, well, that's, you know, and then if we have a problem with on-street parking, we'll have to come back and address that maybe or tighten up the ordinance, but we'll go to two. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, we can, if we start putting covering and stuff, then we're taking up even more footage and really we kind of want this to be possible to do if people really need to do it.
Right.
We can put so much out there, they could never do it.
No, I'm fine with going to. It actually makes a lot of sense when you just look at it and stuff, so. Okay, number seven, under no circumstances shall these be used as vacation or nightly rentals. We just wanted to put that in there as the council wanted. It's here. And it's, all the construction of this will meet the building code. Now, the one thing we are requiring is that they, there is a deed restriction. They're going to fill this out and then it's going to, they're going to show us that they recorded it against the property at the, they'll have to give us a copy of that for them to get their certificate of occupancy.
So when you advise the home real license.
It's on, yeah, that deed restriction goes to the property. It's not the property, current property owner, it's whoever owns it from then forward.
Stays on the property.
Stays with the property.
Or stays on the property, not the.
That's right. And that's why we haven't recorded against the property. And so they'll bring that into us and then we just put a penalty on there just because we like to throw penalties around. I also found that is not supposed to be an exclamation point, but it's supposed to be a one on one. I wanted to really make point a four one, but it's actually supposed to be one four one.
Bat finger.
I know, it's funny how you look at something so many times and it doesn't catch and all of a sudden it's like, whoa, what?
It's all usually in a public meeting.
And it's, that's why I wanted to come tonight.
Nothing but mercy.
That's why we're doing it tonight, I can get all the things done. So, Art, is everybody fine with detached? I think this is a great start.
I think this is a great start.
You guys are awesome for doing this.
We definitely identified a need that I think that we can comfortably move in and start to experiment with this concept within our community. And I know I've been in a position where I've considered doing something like this. It didn't happen, but knowing that it is an ability, I think it just lets families better take care of families. It's the first, you know, building block of our community and I appreciate more opportunities for family to open up their homes to do something like this. Appreciate you putting this code together.
I appreciate the council wanting to do that and move it forward, get it done. I think it will be a great blessing for folks in the coming years, so thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Item eight, discussion and review of proposed amendments to the city code regarding guest parking requirements for multiple family developments, section nine dash 16 dash 12.
Okay, what we have in this one is basically what the council wanted to do a while back. I apologize for taking so long to get it in. We weren't happy with the one per five units, directed to change that. I think with the consensus came down to anywhere between three, three and a half. I'm still trying to help to develop her out a little bit, so you feel free to change that. That's you as the council. I feel comfortable.
You're trying to help them all.
I know, it's this, people don't think I have a heart, but just ask them out there. I don't have a heart, but I do. This, this proves it right here. So we're going from the current five. What's that?
Which document are we on?
We're on the guest parking requirement for multi-family.
Item eight.
And so it's simply just the area that's being changed is right here. It used to be one parking space per five. We're changing it now, it's which is making more spaces. So for every three and a half units, they need to provide a guest parking space for multi-family developments.
All multi-family developments.
All multi-family developments, townhomes, there may be.
Three and a half rounded up.
It, I played it out because I thought, is that being two? And it actually works out okay because it only, every once in a while I have, and it will, I usually do because if it's a half a car, it's got to be a whole car. I generally round up. Actually, we, did you read the bottom? I actually put that in.
One for three.
I know, but if we end up having a point something of a car, I took care of that at the bottom, if you look. In calculating the guest parking car, any fraction five tenths and lower goes drop down, anything at point five higher.
Everything rounds up.
We can do that.
If you cross the point one, you're going.
Okay, too soft of a heart, I guess, right? Is that, so any fraction above, we, I have language for that too. If you feel as a council, you want to go any fraction above.
So I, I want to bring up two points. What is?
That's two points.
One is, I think, I think townhome developments have different parking requirements, just going through the process, maybe they are going to have different parking requirements. Whether or not that gets into this, I don't know, but I would suggest that that would be looked at. The other one is they're mixed use. So if. So you, and you'll likely see some projects come in above the city, where you've got a commercial component and residential for the same car, it's whole new family. And that needs to be looked at too. Do you stack them and have commercial and residential? That's way, way too much. Right? So I think there needs to be an exception for.
Mixed use.
For mixed use, commercial type projects.
Because you have a point, because when the businesses are usually closed at night, guests usually come at night, I mean, I'm not saying that it's not all the time, but the majority of guests come to visitor are in the evenings. So, yeah, so you already have available stalls from the business that is now closed at whatever time it may be, and especially if it's a certain business that closes at five or six. I have all these parking stalls that I shouldn't make them build more to just have a sea of asphalt for parking when they could be using those at those hours. I, I get, that makes a lot of sense.
I remember, right, we had something that we called in our historical downtown, where we were talking about that shared parking component.
Well, we can look at that, I could say, I probably wouldn't hold, this won't be held up by that, but I, I appreciate what you're saying, we can start looking at that.
Not a California project down there, it is a commercial project that has 450 apartments built, and it must admit it's a beautiful project. But it certainly doesn't have the same apartment requirements. That we just simply do in the back of those, those uses overlap. So how, how do you do that? It's a good setting. Is it like over the council? On developer application or?
Well, sometimes it is. Just to let you know, there is a component in your, your off-street parking that allows your planning commission to be, to entertain alternative parking. If.
In off-street parking.
You know.
You know, the commercial development, I, I brought this up before, I think some of the commercial parking requirements we have are too high. I mean, I've never seen a mall. I've never seen Home Depot. I've never seen the mall fold, even on Black Friday. And Black Friday's changing to Cyber Monday. So those, those heavy days are reduced even further. I've seen Costco.
Yeah, way too many times.
And I don't think Costco anticipates, I mean, you're going to have exceptions to the norm. Right? But what happens with Disneyland, for example, they don't build to max capacity because they can't finance the support of that capacity. They don't build to minimum capacity because they tick off all of their guests. They have this what, what's called a design day. And so it's that happy medium of we're building it up, we're not catching these peak days like Black Friday, but we've got, you know, sufficient that we can make things financially work. Because every parking stall you acquire is, is a liability. It's a cost and liability to the business owner, the, the apartment owner, the, the developer, whoever it is. Parking doesn't generate cash. Right? It generates liability and cost and maintenance. You don't have any, generate cash for somebody else, because that's what I did. I'd run, if my parking stall, I'd walk the street. Maybe so. Maybe so, but you got to take yours now. Well, that's a business, I mean, that's, I, I hear. So I, I just think in this, there needs to be some exception for commercial, commercial mixed use.
And again, this one specifically for multi-family developments? So I, you're, is that okay? Well, we can, we can actually, I'll go back and start looking at that and we'll generate some of those at a future date. Now that we've talked about it, I, I can see where that would, would come in, and I have no problem going and looking at that and generating some things, look at some other cities and bring that back to the council. And, and we may be expanding 91612 and have it broken up into, what's that? Oh, no. No, I could because this, I couldn't because it hasn't gone through the planning commission. And when I change my zoning regulations, it has to go to them. So I, I will promise the three that are, that are leaving that, that I will, I will work on that. Because I, I see where that's, I'll break it up into, instead of just being this one title, we'll break it up into four or five of those different alternatives that we'll have, and each one will be a little bit different, and I think it should be a little bit different. The mixed use should be different than, than this. Because it, it has its own animal and it, it has, you know, again, because businesses do close. And some of them are closed on the weekends and some are, you know, most of them are closed at night, so I think it should be able to use that.
Some of the redevelopment in it, like Sears, if I owned the mall over there, I'd take Sears footprint, build a apartment building on that property, because it already got parking. That, that creates an instant demand for the mall, it creates workers for the mall. You know, it's, it's a good opportunity to build a great footprint.
It's got residential behind it, and so it's a great blend, I mean, a fill-in would be a perfect fix for that. Okay. So we're good on this one, and again, I'll, I'll work on breaking that down at future times to help that situation. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Drew. Move on to item nine, discussion review of proposed amendments to the city code for the height restrict regulations, sections 9-10A-4, 9-10B-4, 9-10C-4, and 9-11-4.
The four is the kicker, it's where the height regulations come into all those zones. The three zones we're basically talking about is the multi-family heights, we're talking about the commercial heights and industrial heights. That's what all those 9- everything-4s come in. Currently, the city is at 35 feet. The council felt, the planning commission strongly felt that we needed to look at this and address it, and so here we are tonight. Planning commission's already reviewed this. Basically, what we're saying is, is that height regulations for multi-family projects, let me get back to that. Will be set at 45 feet. Now, I know there's folks who want to maybe, I have no problem tweaking that number. Just to give you some background information, you have already approved some projects with multi-family in the Sienna Hills area. In their PCD, they're allowed to go to 55 feet. Four stories of 55 feet.
Four stories.
Yep.
Without an elevator.
We just redid the heights regulations some time ago, I don't.
No, you, you didn't, you, you changed the code to have them come to you every time to ask for height relief, and after you've had some of them, you felt like.
I didn't.
I'm not really.
I don't know who did, but I didn't, I don't. Yeah, I don't recall having that. Yeah, I don't either. I missed it. I didn't. We moved from the planning commission to the city council. Yeah, but, but the discussion of needing more height, I don't recall having that.
No, I'd, I'd like to see us kind of stabilize our current ordinance and, and just see how it goes. I think it's, I think there's some real, we are having some real unique changes come to the city in, in the form of building structures and types that are, that are different, and I personally, I'd like to see them cross the councils, come, come before the council. If we figure that, if we, if we find after that that we're, we're doing that over and over again repeatedly, and we're just having to just kind of, we're a pass-through organization, I would be, feel much more comfortable putting a regulation in at that point.
Well, if I may, maybe I was a little, I thought I'd had a direction, and one night when we talked about, after you had seven of them on one night, I kind of got the feeling, and I think I asked, would you?
Those were like two feet.
Like, yeah, but, well, let me digress a little bit then, that your planning commission felt very strong over the last six, eight months to a year, if not even more than that, I kept hearing it off and on. And they have, and I've told them, just like citizens do, the planning commission has the opportunity. And, and the wherewithal, they're your land use people, to present to you changes they would like to see, and this, you know, I know it definitely, I'll speak for them in this respect. This is one that they've felt strong about doing. Because again, they've been looking at a lot of conditional use permits that now used to have the height in there, but they know it went to you, it's not because you took it away, it's just that they've been seeing a lot of projects that need that and said, well, why don't we just change the height? And so they strongly felt, you know, now, again, it's coming to you tomorrow night, it's been going through the process. Council has, of course, every right, as they always do, to not, but I would.
It hasn't been secret, townhomes per se.
No, it's, that's why I say it's been multi-family and commercial. That's the only ones we're touching right now, is the multi-family and commercial.
But it's, yeah, not quite even for the townhome projects, they've only put the stuff, townhome projects that have been driving it, is the apartment stuff. And the apartment stuff needs, well, these have been approved at four stories, right? So that needs that, that 55 foot. And if you're commercial. Just into the multi-family. Well, I would suggest that you identify R3 apartment, approved apartments. Or your, your C2 and C3 needs to be 55.
Well, but this is, but all of that stuff is very new to us as a city. And I think there's, there's, there is some real benefit for the council to be involved in those and just get an, get an idea and a sense of what is coming into the city and how they fit in. I, I just assume.
Well, the biggest concern, I, I would like to voice the biggest concern on this is having a council. I think we have such a unique thing, pull both things put together. We definitely needed to clear up our language, and I think what we did is helpful because it protects all the concerns of connecting parties. But I think since because these things are coming in one at a time right now, I, I would really like to see how they are adapted into our community and have more of a say on it. So I, I'm not really comfortable by having so many separated codes. I like the single thing, and if they need to approach the council, approach the council.
I think the only suggestion I have with respect to that is that we just don't make, make sure that we don't get into an arbitrary decision-making. So when the council wants to see each thing individually, just a caution you need to have is you'll need to have some parameters on, by which you would say, we give this a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
But I thought we did that in our, in our verbiage on that.
That's, yeah, that's exactly the conversation we had when we changed the code to bring it to the council. And we, we kind of recognized that, yeah, it, it did box us in a little bit, but I still think where we're, where we're growing and we're seeing a lot of these, we haven't fully understood them. I'd like to see them come to the council.
Well, again, I'm not going that high, please be aware of, you know, like the R3 is, you know, what 98D4 is, it's seven more feet of, of your 35, it's seven.
But when the issue came, when we saw all of those and we're saying, there's a regulation that, we were talking about two feet, we were talking about two or three feet, we weren't talking about another story, and I think our last vote about stories on Bella Vista was no elevator, no story. You know, we're not going to have people lugging their furniture up four stories high without an elevator. It's too much to ask a family to do that and to build buildings that do that. I, I think we all voted on.
No, people have done it.
I can tell you, there's only, of the apartments that are around, there's a lot of four-story apartments and the majority of them are locked up. And, and, and it hasn't caused them issues to get rented because of the demands there. I mean, there's only two projects that got elevators, one of them has been built yet. Right? And that's one thing we do need to keep in mind, because we talk about this a lot. One of the only significant components we have to afford a housing is.
No, and you've, you've made that before, and I think that's fair, and I think, I think honestly, it kind of comes back to my same point, which is, I really feel like the council needs to be aware of those, and needs to be, and needs to see when they come in and, and to weigh that out. Because there, there will be temptations to say, we don't want this, but, but we need it because of the affordable housing component. And, and that is not going to change soon. But it will, it will change a little bit here as, as the economy changes.
Maybe so, but the flip side is the project that I brought in, and we're taking a step off the council, so to speak, if this would not have worked without the height waiver. And for getting it to the point of bringing in, it would have cost me personally accordingly.
Well, but it's a perfect example, it did work. It got passed, it, it had, it had its merits, it had its location. There was enough council members who said, yes, I agree with this, and, and there it went. So in that case, it's, it's exactly a point of, of the system working.
Well, it, it got passed by a 3-2.
Yeah, but it got passed.
And I voted for it because you had storage and you had elevators. Okay? And, and we didn't vote for another one.
But that, that conversation, that conversation was, was extremely educational for me. You know, in, in bringing about conflicting ideas and having to settle them down, I, I really appreciated that as well as other conversations about, about heights, because, because there is these competing.
Is there a height though, you could, because I know one of the discussions we've had is to set good ordinances. If we provide and produce good ordinances, we don't have to have those discussions, we don't leave our building contractors in limbo land. We do, again, by setting good structure and so.
And this is, to that exact point, I appreciate having those come to me so that I can get a better idea of what that is. I just don't know where it's at yet. I don't know where that height is yet to say, well, we can just put that in black ink, and then we can just build to it and we're fine.
I can tell, I can tell you this, looking at some of the projects around, if you look up north of me, there's that apartment project, just north of Bella Vista on the right-hand side. Right? That's a two-story apartment project, and I would consider that a Class C at best project. Right? But Red Rock, La Vida, Ovation, some of the other ones, when you go that, you know, that higher, you take it up to a Class A project, you take it to a a better value project, it's going to be higher property value and, and have better tenants.
Well, so, so, I mean, is it, or when you, your classification, I'm not a, I've not used that before, had any conversation with you on it. But so, so what, is it amenities that are in there, is it the exterior look of it, the feel?
It's one thing to go build a couple of fourplexes at a time.
Yeah.
Right? It's another thing that you can do for 750,000 bucks a month. That's a, that's, it, it, it's another thing when you're doing a $20 million building. Right? You push the ownership, you push the management of it, you push the, the, I guess, scrutiny by the banks up, you push this, you push the values up to a point where you're changing the, the, I guess, the.
I see your point.
Plan hell.
I, I see your point.
As an order that can even pursue that.
And I hate to sound fixed to my position, but, but that again reinforces my position, which is if you want to have these, these builders come in and build Class A products, it really is nice to have something out there that they have to come in to get from you. So they can say, look how nice this project is, look how well we've done with this. We deserve to go above and, literally above and beyond because, because we have that. And having them come back before the council is a nice vehicle to do. But I'm, I just don't know, I'm not sure if I know what that number is to send it.
Yeah, what is it, Councilman Bellis, and just a thought, since you, you dance in this arena, what is the cost process or the development process of a developer when he comes? Obviously, he can't do a whole lot when he doesn't know what his height is going to be or he can't. You suppress a certain amount of applications just because the ordinance doesn't allow it. So why would, why would somebody go for suspend? I, I mean, just to get the elevate, just to get to the point of elevations that I brought into the city.
And site plans, yeah.
And site planning and stuff like that was, was about just shy of 50 grand.
But where, but where staff does such a good job of saying to our developers who are coming in, look, this is what the council usually votes for, this is what is usually acceptable, here's the process, here's, here's how to do it.
Are you going to gamble a?
No, you're fair, that's, that's a fair.
That kind of money?
That's a fair point, I'm not the one gambling it, but I'm also the one who has to kind of weigh these out, and I just don't have the skills.
I didn't go down that road until the entitlement for the amount of apartments was there. But if I couldn't, if I got, had been denied on that four-story, then there's no physical way to add the parking, to add the storage, to add the amenities that are desired, and, and get the density.
Yeah. I mean, I just see, I, I hear your point, I just, I, I feel like the market is so driven towards this. We're seeing more and more applicants wanting to come from it. Maybe, maybe Drew can speak to if he feels like this is a barrier, because we haven't really, we haven't really discussed that this is a barrier for builders to come into our, our city with the current ordinance, that's not really been one of the reasons, but do you feel like that's been an issue?
Well, with some of them it has. You know, and they tell me how hard, and some of them thought, you know, that's still worth the investment, others just said, nah, and I don't see them again. I don't know what those projects, where they ended up, if they ended up maybe in our adjoining city, you know, I don't keep track and tabs on all those all the time, but I, I have no, and that's why I went to the 42, is I have, I have noticed even three-story buildings right now with way they're designing them and the things they want to do, they're, they're still coming in above 35 feet, and that, that is an issue. I'm not, you know, I'm just saying that one, I, I really think you need to probably consider, strongly consider going above 35 feet on, on the height regulations, at least in this R3 zone. You know, I, I mean, I'm just telling you right now, even the three-story buildings, a lot of them are coming in at 37 to 42. And, and they are just because that, you know, I don't know what, and I tell them, well, can you shrink, and they go, well, I don't want to be making, and it gets back to what Councilman Bellis was saying, it ends up being a class whatever, because everything feels like it's stuck in, it's not the higher ceilings, it's not the.
That might be a decent compromise, I would literally want to sit down and look at all of our R3 zones throughout the city and try to weigh out.
We don't have many, but you're seeing, again, some of these other projects are going into Sienna Hills, which was awarded, you know, a while back, 55 feet for, for their multi-family.
And the reason why they got that 55 feet is because that's a great one, four-story to five-story. By the time you go to the fifth story. By the time you go to the fifth story, it gets really cost prohibitive for multifamily hotels. Unless you're, I mean, it doesn't make sense to do a five-story, you're going to want to do an eight or nine or ten-story at that point.
There's just, I'm just picturing a lot of areas in our city where a three-story building is not necessarily appropriate. But then there's other places where, yeah, it's a great fit, and we need that, we need that housing.
Well, to give you an idea, R three is, it's in that area between eleven hundred east and the Parkway. There's a lot of R three and some projects being built right there. Now, one of them is a townhome vacation rental project.
Yeah, most of that's filling in.
But then the one next to the veterans facility that's being started right now is three-story. They have two-story townhomes out front, and then they went to three-story buildings in the back, and they had to scrunch a little bit to get to thirty-five feet. Or did you guys grant them a height waiver? I can't remember, because that project's been on and going on and off for quite a while. It's flat roof, that's right.
They can squeeze out one in, but if you want to have a pitch roof, you can.
Yep, and so again, you're going to limit yourself to, you know, which isn't bad, I'm just saying, there's some nice-looking flat roof buildings, but they sure do look better if they have a bit of a roof on them.
With, you know, Councilman Turek, maybe a thought is, we basically finished the concept, talking about parking, breaking things up to where it might be to an advantage to show where the exception would be to parking. I guess the council just has to debate, would this be a considered comparable value of, in these situations, maybe these are the acceptable heights in these situations as we know them now?
Well, that's kind of my thought, is that you limit to an R three, that you don't put up a car block across the city, it's an R three-only type of situation.
Well, that's what I was...
That's what we're proposing, yeah.
Really, it's a zoning issue.
Exactly.
And if you can identify the zones where you say, well, in some places it makes sense, in other places it doesn't make sense, you can make that identified in a zoning issue, you still accomplish what you want to without having to have these come to you every single application and not be a barrier to people who wouldn't even want to start the process. And heaven forbid, they try to get a height waiver and do a PUD.
Well, you can actually throw those into your PUD, we were generous, you all had hearts when that one came, that we allowed it to be. But again, we only are touching R threes, commercial and industrial buildings, it's not across the city, it's only R three, only commercial, only industrial.
I'd have to go look and see what the zone, I just haven't, haven't looked at those zoning, because they're already established.
Well, I think it might be acceptable if it's three stories, if three stories and it goes from thirty-five to forty-two, but as long as it's three stories. I, you know, I think some of those... Well, at least if you're talking about the three-story, C three buildings, you know, maybe we do allow some latitude in the code for some design elements about what you're putting into those stories. Are the ceilings going to be a little bit higher, is it going to be...
And I can see the zoning...
It's a height.
Look at what we have acceptable in your zones, in your C two zone, you got hotels acceptable. In a hotel, they're going to come in at fifty-five foot, that's what they're asking for. Because that's what, they need the four stories, it doesn't, you know, that's what they're going to go for.
They do.
So, yeah, but it's a C two zone, they would have to, I mean, we're talking C two commercial, I would say, put it at fifty-five feet, that's what I would suggest, or read most of the times. You know, I think forty-two is too short for a C two zone. Now, forty-two is probably fine for a C one zone, or neighborhood commercial.
So when you're C two and three, go to, you could keep it at, say, forty-two in a AP or C one zone. And then when you go C two and three, you go up to fifty-five, and then all your industrial, just let them be at fifty-five.
And then R three, I would suggest R three goes to fifty-five, and then if you approve the R three, then you go, you could potentially get that at the density.
Yeah, I'd even drop back down on R three and come back down to forty-two.
I think elsewhere, we're mixed-use commercial.
What, all of these?
Because if you go to mixed-use commercial, then you're saying, we want commercial on the bottom, and we want apartments on the top of it, and you got to give them that additional height if you think that one.
I think one of the zones is the commercial, the PUD commercial.
I think one of my feelings after talking through this, I feel like it's close. My hope is it gives the council that's continuing for it a little bit more time just to validate it out, because I still think it's moving the right direction. I don't feel like it's done, but I still feel like it needs just a little bit more conversation. If I felt like it was all cleared up and stuff, it'd be more, but I feel it just deserves a little bit more conversation. But that's just my feelings on it.
Yeah, originally, I mean, we kind of scrambled on this to move it previously, and then, because we thought we were going to have a big problem, and then it just kind of crickets, we haven't really seen that many height. I think there's a little more time, a little more input.
You have, I mean, there was a lot of public outcry on Sky Brillo. You know, there was a lot of people doing it, but...
And then that's when you changed it, was the Sky Brillo, and since then, you have had quite a few applications come in, more than I, my previous years, nobody, you know, I mean, that was always an option for them to ask the city for a greater height. Nobody ever did, but that was back then, now you're in a whole new era. Again, land, all your good, easy land's gone. Now, the thing is, you've got to go up.
Well, I'm saying with regard to Sky Brillo is, don't give them the density if you're not willing to give them, don't build the density.
I know, I'm not opposed on this thing, but it's almost, I don't feel like we're the one that's going to, and I think it just deserves some more conversation. It has progressed since, it's addressing our needs, we are changing as a community, it just needs a little bit more, I think, that will be where we need to be right now.
Let Councilman Liny and Councilman Kellis weigh it out.
Okay, so...
You didn't get to make up with that.
I thought I'd get a little bit of a mind.
The lullabies of our voices were just too much.
Well, we'll let you work on it again then, how's that sound?
Yeah, so you, the forty-two, you didn't want to go up to forty-two? No, forty-two, I was happy. I thought that was good for the R three. I see what you're saying.
Well, it depends on what the general plan is underneath it, it could be anywhere from seven to twelve, or thirteen to sixteen, depending if it's in a medium-high density, or if it's in a high-density, you know. And again, those are things we can throw into that matrix. There's nothing wrong with throwing the matrix to give people, at least they, you know, know that that's the zone, if I want to hit that, I've got to find a piece of property that's in a high-density, general plan zone, that has that ratio, so.
Okay, we're going to move on. All right. Item ten, discussion and review of proposed amendments to city code for Title Six, Chapter Seven, Public Ways and Property, Standardized Street Addressing, applicant Washington City.
Now, again, because of my big heart, and I decided to help Dale out, who's our nine-one-one specialist, of course, that works in Mike's department. And Dale has been, because he's so quiet and shy, he just hasn't pushed this forward probably earlier than he should have, is that the county nine-one-one system asked all the cities, hey, we'd really like all of you to adopt a standardized street addressing code, please, you know? And we've been kind of enforcing it, but then I get people coming back saying, well, show me in your code where I have to. You know, and then it's like, okay, what do we do, but we still try to make them follow the nine-one-one outline in the county. So finally, here it is before you, other cities have adopted this, it's kind of a model thing. No, that was my first question too, I said, Dale, we're not going through. Yeah, he never had to sit in those meetings, but I still remember the night somebody...
Reconcile the funny numbering between St. George and Washington.
They can't do that, unfortunately, because it's all about where you start your zero zeros at, your east and west, and that just always throws that a mess. But it is, that's just one of those, it is what it is. All of a sudden, yeah, where I'm going down one street this, and then it's going this direction in the next city, and I haven't changed my car around, but it's all of a sudden now a west address instead of an east, so. Again, this would have cured your insomnia, I hope you did kind of read it, but it's boilerplate what all the other cities have kind of adopted. And if you had any questions, I could, I couldn't answer them, I'd have to get with Dale, but...
Drew, we've always had the building identification if the code happened to be, because I have noticed on occasions...
Yeah, the building code has a standard in it that we can enforce, this comes from that. Yeah. And we'll just have to start following through, yeah. So then, again, this is where this comes from, this is what it is, it's just to get in, again, standardized street address, it just says that when you're going this direction, here's how it will go, when you're going this direction, here's how it will go, and that's how your numbers are derived.
I feel like Brigham Young would have voted for that.
He probably wrote the original draft.
All right, thank you all, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I feel like we should talk more.
We'll do that tomorrow.
Exactly. Hi.
Yeah, thank you. Roger, thank you for the chocolates.
What'd I do? Yeah. I can make that, as long as I'm not having a baby. Okay, that's, we're going to have all our stuff, then, okay, yeah, be there. Are you serious? No way! Are you going to frame that one? So he needs anyone that has the ability to do it, huh? The end. Yeah, okay, Mayor, remember, December nineteenth, six o'clock.